Great, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Lakewood City Council on Monday, September 21st, 2020. At 5:30 PM, we are meeting virtually via Zoom. So I'll now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Gutwine? Bida?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Johnson?
I am here.
Labierre?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. All right, so the purpose of this meeting is now call an executive session. I'll ask the mayor pro tem to please make that motion.
Hang on one second, I'm having some computer issues here. Hang on just one second. And I still don't have the script for that.
Okay, one second here, I can resend it to you.
Oh, here we go, I have it.
Okay.
Okay, I move to hold an executive session pursuant to Sections 2.15(c)(2), (c)(3) and (c)(4) of the City of Lakewood Home Rule Charter, and Sections 24-6-402, 4A, 4B, and 4D of the Colorado Revised Statutes, to determine a position relative to issues subject to negotiation, to receive reports on the progress and status of negotiations, to develop strategy, and to instruct negotiators to consider the purchase or sale of property by the city, and for matters of attorney-client privilege related thereto, all with respect to Westland Town Center. I further move that we adjourn the special meeting from the executive session.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes, 11 ayes, 0 nay. If I am wrong, please speak your piece. Okay, 11 ayes, 0 nay. So bear with us, this is all brand new. So now, the clerk will send us an invitation to enter a breakout room.
Bear with me, it'll take me just a second.
That's all right, we're all learning together.
Do we go back to email to get to the breakout room, or how do we get there? Okay, Barb, you'll lead us.
All right, looks like that is now up, does everybody see that? Please click on your join breakout room.
I don't see what I'm supposed to do.
I don't either.
Okay, so there should be a pop-up that says, "The host is inviting you to join breakout room."
Well, we should have been automatically placed in it. Normally, it's just that we all get put in one.
So maybe as host, if I join, does that mean everybody goes?
Um...
The pop-up just appeared for me.
Are they coming now? Okay.
Yep, it's coming now.
Good, okay.
I'm going, I'll see you guys after the teleport.
I'm going!
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City Council Study Session of September 21st, 2020. We are starting a little bit late at 7:30 PM, and that is because we had an executive session prior to this to discuss things related to the Westland Shopping Center and just let the community know that that conversation will continue and that you're welcome to reach out to your council members to learn more and discuss different things. So with that, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Present.
Vincent?
Here.
Gutwine?
Here.
Peta?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Springsteen? Franks?
Here.
Johnson? Labir?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Fantastic. Well, again, I'd like to thank everybody and welcome you to this evening. We have three great topics and presentations. I'd also like to commend the city team for their hard work in putting these out on Lakewood Speaks. So if you want a full version of what we're going to be reviewing tonight, please go to LakewoodSpeaks.org and you'll be able to see these presentations in their entirety. And again, I want to thank Ms. Hodgson and her team for getting those together. They're very well done and very informative. As with any study session, we have a public input portion. So if you'd like to participate, you can dial 312-626-6799, webinar ID 91567635280. Press pound to join the meeting and then star nine to request to speak and star six to mute and just let the record show that Ms. Springsteen is now on with us as well. So we are all here and we are ready to rock and roll. So item three, presentation, State of the Court. And I believe that will be Ms. Presiding Judge Anne Stavick will be here for any questions that you might have. And Ms. Hodgson, just to clarify, is there a short presentation on this or just the the main one that was on Lakewood Speaks?
It's really just the main one that was on Lakewood Speaks, but I think Judge Stavick will, as soon as she's on, will just make a couple of introductory comments. Having said that, I don't quite see her yet. But that, but that's the intent.
Okay, I do see, I think she might be in the gallery and maybe not over on the panelist.
Right. She needs to be admitted into the, as a panelist, please. That's Tim.
Hi, Tim.
Technology's hard.
You got a stiff neck, Mr. Mayor? Sorry, I'm having to resort to my phone because the computer's not working right, so carry on, please.
Michelle, can you make sure that Judge Stavick is being admitted?
Yes, I don't see her name here, but I do see Municipal Court, so I'm gonna unmute that to see if that could possibly be her.
Can you unmute her?
I'm here and I can see you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, Your Honor, good evening.
All right, and the video, I'll get that started as well. There we go.
All right, good evening.
They said all I had to do was push one button, but it's a little more complicated than that. Well, hello, everybody. It's good to see everybody. I'm, I'm hoping that next year we don't have to do it this way because I sure appreciate seeing you in person rather than doing this. But technology is amazing, so thank you, Mayor Paul and counsel. And I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to answer any questions or give you any follow-up that you might have after seeing the video. I know you've been meeting for quite a while, so I don't want to get into too much more since you have have watched the video. This is the point when I normally turn around and say, here's my wonderful team of managers and coworkers. They are here with me. They're in the other room. But I do have Judge Nicole Bozarth and Judge Corinne Flanagan both with me as well as the management team. So Scott Hefty, Court Administrator, Tammy Smith, Mark Dito, and Jennifer Zublick are all watching and with me. Just can't see them, so. So with that, again, I appreciate this opportunity. I am open to questions or comments or anything that you'd like more information about. I'm happy to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. So I would just thank you and your team. And, you know, we didn't have an opportunity to really formally welcome Judge Bozarth to to the City of Lakewood. I think that was probably our last meeting that we had was when we had the evening interviews and put her forward. So certainly a welcome and a challenging time. What I'd like to just say is I'm so proud of all that our court is doing through these challenging times with the help of the IT Department to really continue on with your mission. But the mission of compassion, it sounds like from your report and really trying to help those most in need get through challenging times, whether dealing with opioid abuse, the teens, and some of the obstacles you face. And I think what was two points that I think that resonate. One is dealing with speeding. That's something the council's been trying to kind of address as well as the Police Department. And if you follow the Police Department's Twitter feed, you regularly see people doing over 100 miles an hour on city streets, and it is so, so dangerous. And and I know we have challenges all over, but I appreciate the extra attention to that going forward. And then also the issue related to the jail and something that you touched on. And I think something that council will probably continue to have conversations about going forward as well and the ability to try to lodge people that we need to lodge when appropriate and not what that balance is. But I certainly understand the challenges that creates for you. So again, I think it's about a 40-minute report that you did online, and it's very thorough, and thank you for all of that. And with that, I will open up the floor to any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Johnson?
It's just nice to see you, Judge, and thank you for everything you do. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Abel?
Your Honor, I'm very impressed with the way the courts have adapted to the virtual world. And I'm amazed at the way y'all are handling those cases. And I'm also amazed constantly at how our Municipal Court has so many outreach programs and so much compassion for the people that come before you. So thank you, and I hope that, you know, all those kind words will get my case dismissed the next time I'm in court. Thank you.
We should do a disclaimer, but so whenever you're elected a city council or mayor, the first thing you're told is that you are never able to ever advocate or change an outcome for a speeding ticket or any other court appearance that you will not be seen within the Lakewood Courts, but in Jefferson County. Just get that disclaimer.
There you go.
All right, Ms. Gutwine?
Do you have that all memorized and ready to go there?
I've been through a few orientations.
Well, Judge, I just also wanted to thank you so much and then also for just the, your history of work in our community. And I'm just really happy that the programs that you've been able to create over the years, this isn't, aren't going to be impacted by the budget. I think they're really important. this isn't going to be impacted by the budget. I think they're really important and, you know, really important for the people that need them most. And so I'm just really happy that we're going to continue to have those programs. And I want to thank you and just voice my support. So, thanks.
Ms. Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Yes, I had the opportunity to talk to Judge Stavick recently as part of a committee commitment that we have. And so I just wanted to thank you for all the great information that you provided to the committee members and certainly for all the online information that's really important to our community. And also just wanted to ask one quick question. I have had outreach now from two citizens who have heard about innovative programs in other parts of the country and just wanted to find out if that's just something, if we get that information, if it's the best avenue is just to send that over to you guys for part of your, you know, as you analyze sort of the trends in kind of providing services to our community.
Oh, thank you. I would love to get information about new programs. In fact, we are always trying to watch the latest trends and look at the latest research. And so if you can email me, email Scott Hefty, really any of us, our probation, Chief Probation Officer, she's very much on top of a lot of what works and what doesn't. And she's actually been doing a lot of research this summer, so it's a perfect time to be looking at different programs that we could be trying and starting. And things are changing. I mean, we don't have the jail space now and so we are having to make adjustments. So I think this is a good time to have innovation and fresh ideas. So thank you. We would very much appreciate that.
Thank you. I really felt you guys would be open to that and just so proud of all the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thanks for being here with us tonight. Just a couple of questions I had. One of the things I'm hearing a lot in the defense attorney community is just concerns with trials and motions hearings, being outside of the courtroom, being remote, and whether constitutional rights can be adhered to in that situation. For instance, if a jury is spread throughout the courtroom and everybody's seeing something different, maybe not seeing people's faces or reactions, things like that. And I don't know if it's something you've run into yet, but I was curious about your take on that. With concerns about jail space, I was wondering if you could maybe just speak to how, and yes, people may have seen your video, but just speak to the public about sort of your theories on getting people out of the system a little bit. And then finally, I don't know if you have followed what I have been doing over the last couple of months concerning the use of ketamine on civilians who are found to be in quote-unquote "excited delirium" and what we have seen in the state of Colorado with Elijah McLean, with many things that have happened in the city of Aurora concerning that issue. And I have tried to bring that issue out in the city of Lakewood as well because it's something West Metro Fire is doing frequently in Jefferson County. And I just wanted to know what your take on that is and whether you're seeing a lot of cases of people who are being found in a state of excited delirium and who are being administered ketamine coming through the Lakewood Courts or if that's something that kind of gets passed on to Jefferson County. But I'd love to hear your take on that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And yeah, those are some good questions and concerns. First of all, the concerns about the trials and the constitutional rights of the defendants have been foremost and are trying to decide how to do those trials. We've now done three jury trials, which I think is probably more than any other municipality in the state. And they've actually gone very well and have been very smooth. The witnesses have been able to testify in the courtroom with the six jurors in the courtroom where they can see them. And we've made sure throughout the whole trial to let the jurors know that if they can't hear, they can't see, that they need to let us know. We do have some screens so that if witnesses need to be identified or if anybody's having trouble understanding someone or feels the need to be able to see the whole face without a mask on, we can use those shields now. And we have that for defendants or witnesses or attorneys or anybody actually that feels that that's more comfortable or more appropriate than wearing masks. We've used the big forums for the jury selection and then the trials themselves are done in the courtrooms. And so it's actually fairly similar to what we usually do. It doesn't feel that different. We do have plexiglass there, but you can see right through that. And we really have had no complaints about hearing or seeing the witnesses or the attorneys. We're also not doing remote trials and we haven't done many hearings remotely. Most of those are still live. We're doing a lot of, when I say hearings, I mean motions hearings. I think that's what you were referring to, the kinds of hearings where you need to have witnesses and evidence and somebody's needing to judge credibility. And most of those are live in court handled, just the way they always have been. So I feel pretty comfortable that we're protecting rights. As far as the jail space problem, I could probably talk for an hour about that. I mean, this started before COVID. This was a budget issue. The jail just did not have the deputies to have the entire seven floors open. And so it was really a budget issue and then COVID aggravated that. They needed to divide up the inmates and put them in separate cells for their own safety. We are trying to be creative with sentences. We're certainly, we've always pushed treatment. We've always tried to get to the root of why a person is offending. And so that's the norm for us and we're still very much doing that. We can still suspend sentences. We could even suspend jail time, though I think it could be kind of an empty threat because I think most defendants do realize the jail's not taking misdemeanor and municipal clients right now. We also have been reaching out to the police department and letting them know that when they run into people who have warrants or if they want to bring somebody into court right away, if there's a chance that we can try to get somebody hooked up with treatment, that we're basically always open to having the police bring someone. We also have always had an open door for defendants, so even if they have active warrants or it's not their court date, if they get here, we're going to see them. And if they've shown up, that's usually a sign that they might be amenable to getting into some kind of treatment. So we're really, you know, truly trying to get to the bottom of what's going on with each of the offenders and working hard at that. And there are enough people, I think COVID has opened some people's eyes. It's been interesting to see people who've been longtime offenders who suddenly don't want to live like this. And so we actually have seen some positive results from that. It's a pretty scary thing and particularly people who are out on the streets. They start realizing this might be time to take advantage of some of the things we offer. As for the ketamine, I can honestly say, I don't think I have seen a case where that has been a factor that has been part of the municipal case that has been brought to my attention. My guess is that usually comes up after the contact with the police and when there's a medical situation. And we wouldn't see any kind of medical records. And so it could be that those kinds of cases are going to the county, but I have actually had not one single case that has involved ketamine use that I'm aware of. It could well be after the summons was written or the arrest was made and the reports don't discuss it. But thank you for those questions.
Thank you, Your Honor. Anybody else? Okay, all right. Well, again, we want to thank you very much. We do have a public input piece to this this evening. And we didn't have any comments on Lakewood Speaks pertaining to this presentation. So I'll just see if there's anybody in the queue tonight. I know there's some folks that want to speak on item four. Is there anybody in the queue who wishes to speak on the State of the Courts here in Lakewood? If so, please press star nine and then star six to unmute. Salazar, anything?
We have three callers with their hands up, but I believe they're for the sustainability. You want me to unmute one and find out?
Yeah, let's see. I imagine they're for sustainability too, but let's just double check before and then we can let the judge go.
Okay. It'll be caller 1458.
Good evening, 1458. You are on. This is the State of the Court presentation. Are you here for this or are you here for the next item on sustainability? If you can unmute by pressing star six?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we are to speak on item number four, not the court process.
Sounds good. We will come back to you then. I appreciate it. We'll keep you in the queue. That's what we figured, but wanted to be, wanted to be safe. So with that, Your Honor, thank you again, and we will continue on to the next topic tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your support. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is our yearly update on the comprehensive plan and sustainability. I think there had been some hard copies as well as a presentation by Mr. Waddnell and his team, as well as Mr. Wachtel. Again, very, very thorough. So with that, we will invite them into the meeting to see if they can answer any questions or if you have any comments.
Mayor, I think each of them have a real brief kind of introduction.
Good evening, Kristi. Good evening, Jonathan. There you are. And are we gonna have Mr. Waddnell or is this our, are we rolling?
I'm expecting Mr. Waddnell to join. Oh, there he is.
There he is. All right. Well, good evening and welcome. And the floor is all yours. And Mr. Waddnell, you are on mute.
Okay, not on mute?
There you go.
Okay, that's a common thing I do, unfortunately. Yeah, I just wanted to talk real briefly on the comprehensive plan update. And it's really not an update to the plan itself. It's a status report on the implementation steps. And I know Kristi had a couple of slides. I don't know if we're able to see them, but if we're not, just wanted to acknowledge Kristi Ivanoff, who's really worked a lot on this update and on the comprehensive plan. And really, just very briefly, the comp plan was adopted in 2015. And I think we may have a screen share. There we go. And it looks 10 years out into the future. And it looks at the entire range of city topics, including parks, open space, recreation, economic vitality, neighborhoods. And every year we do a check-in and we're actually five years out from the adoption. And typically, you know, like say, a comp plan looks 10 years into the future. So what we're really looking at are the goals and the action steps. And they all tie into the vision and the guiding principles. And the idea is to kind of keep track of where we are each year in terms of action steps. And there are ongoing ones. There are short-term and there are long-term action steps. So that's all in the report. I'm not going to repeat any of that. But I also wanted to mention, we did highlight in the report some key implementation projects for this year and they really reflect, I think, some good creativity and innovation during the pandemic. We've, all departments within the city have had to adjust, you know, their programs and put many things online or look at some different ways of approaching projects. So those are highlighted in the presentation. And I just, the last thing I mentioned is that implementation, I think, really needs to be flexible. I mean, we need to obviously adapt to changing economic factors, demographics, development pressures. Obviously, the COVID pandemic is, you know, a huge example of that. But they all kind of tie back into the overall goals and the overall vision. So I think I'll leave it at that and be available for any questions, but really this is a check-in. And I think, you know, despite all the challenges, there's been some really interesting and innovative projects that have occurred within the last six months to nine months. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Waddnell. So just as an order here, Ms. Hotson, I have all this listed under item four. Do you want to just do comprehensive plan and then go into?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that makes the best sense to bifurcate them. So to do first questions and discussion around the comprehensive plan and then close that out and let those good folks go. And then we'll have the sustainability update plan, or plan update, plan update, et cetera.
Sounds good. So we will open up the floor. I'll just have one comment. You know, it's incredible. I think there's 400 and some action steps. And certainly you're ticking off a lot of different things in a lot of different areas in trying to encompass a lot of different things. So hats off. Keep it up as we continue to move forward at five years. I did see, you know, some of these were COVID-related responses. And I guess the question is, did other things then get pushed back because we got sent into this? Or were there parallel meanings to some of these or you were looking at doing some of these already and COVID enabled us to? That struck me that I think a few of the slides in there were really related to COVID response. And had we not had COVID, I guess, what would we have been more focused on or differently focused on?
Well, I think that COVID, it's probably a range of things, but I think maybe the overall theme would be that COVID required a different approach to implementing some of the things that are in the plan. So like recreation did some things obviously online, public engagement, obviously online. So I think it represents maybe not pushing things aside, but trying to do things differently. And things for other reasons may have had to get delayed a bit. But I don't know if that answers your question, but I think it's really trying to unique, trying to put a spin on what we normally do.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Hi, Roger.
Hi.
Just talk, just talk.
This doc, this document is, uh, really nicely done and I appreciate the time. You did a great deal of thought to put it together. I just have a, a question and, and a few comments. On page four, it talks about the commitment to social equity. And, um, if we could please have what that definition is and how the city will achieve it, and if you have certain metrics to measure that.
Hey, I think, um, that's something I would like to be able to get back to you on with some specifics.
Okay. Okay, on page 24, you're talking about public art selection process and to determine ways to make the process more inclusive and representative of the community where art is located. And I just want to thank you for codifying that. I think that's very important, that people who are going to live near the art, that they have a part in that process. And then on page 24, um, it speaks historic preservation and a historic preservation com- commission. And I just would like to mention that there's a very dedicated group that's out there, the Lakewood Historical Society. And I think that they should be part of that, um, commission. I'd be happy to get you a contact for that if you'd like.
Okay, yeah. Okay, um, yes, thank you. And if you do, they have been, um, part of the process, but if you have a contact, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Let me go back here. All right, Mr. Waddnell, thank you very much. And, and Kristi, thank you as well. Again, for the community, all of this presentation is on LakewoodSpeaks.org. It's very thorough, a lot of great information. So I'd encourage you to please tune in there if you'd like to learn more. I will now again open up the public input portion. And I do still believe the four hands that are up are waiting for the sustainability, uh, presentation. So, um, with that, I will just ask if there's anybody outside of that. Please raise your hand now, which would be star nine. Okay. We will now move on to our next presentation. And, uh, that will be from Mr. Wachtel. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks, um, for the opportunity to provide an update on, uh, the sustainability plan. Um, very thorough and probably a little bit long presentation was on Lakewood Speaks. Um, so I've got a very short, uh, shortened, uh, introductory version here. And I've got, um, some of our other team members, uh, from the Sustainability Division here to answer questions as well. So I think I'll share my screen here for a few seconds. Hopefully everybody can see that. Um, the 2015, same, same year as the comp plan was updated, we adopted Lakewood's first, uh, comprehensive sustainability plan for the community. And the intent there, the overarching purpose of that plan, um, as a reminder, was to, um, was to guide our effort in ensuring that practices and decisions that we make today don't compromise the quality of life for future generations. And it's a very robust plan and I'd like to think it's really done a good job, uh, standing the test of five years, um, that many of the, um, current best practices in the field, um, are reflected in the seven chapters, the 36 targets, the 63 implementation strategies and the 90 data indicators that are in that plan. Um, I think it was the city's first really metric-based plan. So that means there's a lot for us to be held accountable to. Um, and, uh, we did in-depth triple bottom line assessments of costs and payback and financial feasibility. And, um, so to update you on how we're doing on all that, uh, demands really an annual, uh, report. Community can find that online at Lakewood.org forward slash sustainability plan. They can find the original plan and every year's annual report. And then the appendix of each of those reports is all the data we collect around all of those metrics and indicators, which is a pretty hefty lift, um, but is proving to be really informative and helpful as we work through our, our work plan. Uh, so I think the fundamental question we're asking ourselves every time we, uh, stop and look back at this is, how are we doing towards that goal? Are we doing a good job, uh, protecting quality of life for future generations? Uh, the presentation that's on Lakewood Speaks gives an overview, maybe tries to answer that question a bit. Um, goes over key projects and priorities and also provides a sustainable neighborhood's update. Am I breaking up? Are you guys still able to hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit.
Came to the office hoping that wasn't going to be an issue.
Um, can maybe turn your screen off. Sometimes that helps the connectivity.
Yeah, one second.
We lost everyone.
How's the audio here? Can you guys still hear me?
That's good. It's a great picture.
Okay. So I'll just, uh, go over this without the slides and you have the full presentation was online. So we had 36 targets, about 15 of those are on track, 12 are not. And nine, um, we're hoping we'll be able to determine, um, based on future data collection. Or they might not be applicable anymore, one of the realities of setting a metric-based plan for a 10-year window. And of the 63 implementation strategies, uh, 25, we've seen significant progress. Uh, 31 are underway and there's a handful that have not yet been started. So, so we're doing our best. We're working through this. Um, some of the highlights that are in there that I, I do want to mention really quickly are that our greenhouse gas emissions are trending down. They're down 12% from our baseline. So that's great. We're heading towards our 20% reduction goal community-wide. Um, it is important to note that we need to do better than that to really, at this point, match, um, state commitments and, uh, national and international best practice. Uh, we've been implementing our enhanced development menu. That really ensures that large developments, buildings and investment in the community are supporting our community and our neighborhood goals through very site-relevant enhancements like onsite renewable energy opportunities, public facilities and amenities, multimodal transportation enhancement, water-wise landscapes and things like that. So, uh, we're excited that that's now in effect, um, and that we're able to be implementing that. Uh, we've taken some big strides in our building codes over the last couple of years. Solar-ready rooftops are now required, EV-ready parking requirements, enhanced energy efficiency, uh, waste diversion requirements for construction and demolition. That's a, that's a big accomplishment. Um, we're one of only a handful of cities in the state doing that. Um, and that's great. Uh, big steps forward in municipal energy and water efficiency. Uh, the, uh, energy performance contract that Community Resources, um, is part of is saving us more than $130,000 a year. And where you've reduced our greenhouse gas emissions by close to 2 million pounds. And that's less than a nine-year, uh, payback period for those investments. So that's, that's a great example of how the efficiency, um, can really help move all of this forward. And hopefully we can do more of that. Um, that was a good first test. Uh, municipal renewables, we're now at 42% of our electrical demand from renewables. And we have a long list of facilities that are now 100% powered by renewable electricity. And you're going to start to see a really cool logo and information at those facilities highlighting that. Um, ongoing municipal zero-waste efforts, we diverted almost 90,000 pounds of waste from the Civic Center in 2019. And of course, the, uh, Sustainable Neighborhoods Program continues to be a powerhouse of innovation, of volunteerism. 27,000 or more participants since we started the program. Last year, almost 1,000 hours of volunteer time. And the 6,500 residents engaged in the last program year include a whole slew of efforts that have taken place since the pandemic. The innovation here and the way this program is successfully showing its ability to be a tool for resiliency, um, is really exciting and it's been amazing to watch. Uh, so we're even launching with two new neighborhoods. So that's exciting. Um, Oakane Park and Weir Gulch Gardens are both joining the program. Um, and so doing those things virtually, changing our model, but we think it's working really well. So, um, hats off to all those resident volunteers and to Alyssa Vogon, our planner, who has really championed, uh, the innovation there. And then we highlighted our priorities going forward. So, uh, those include things like climate vulnerability assessments, um, continuing to add to our sustainable development and site requirements, um, energy and water efficiency programs. Um, we really have a lot to do with sustainable business programs and that's on our radar. Um, and, uh, waste, of course, being a challenging issue always, um, continues to be on our priority list. Uh, taking some different approaches, including working, uh, through a regional waste shed, uh, approach, where we can look at, um, making sure that collectively as a region, we have the right infrastructure, end markets, processing facilities to help, uh, the market, uh, produce, um, opportunities, um, in, uh, for our community if, if we're not going to do other actions ourselves. So, um, there's a lot of opportunities there. Um, so with all that, um, open to questions, um, I'll, I'll be here. We have Alyssa Vogon, our sustainability planner, available. Uh, her area is the community focus and sustainable neighborhoods. We also have Jeff Wong, our senior sustainability planner for energy, water and climate available to answer questions. And Caitlin has involved Wong, our senior sustainability planner, who's working on climate and resiliency and sustainable business and a lot of the, um, equity efforts as well. So with that, I'm going to try to turn my video back on.
There you are.
I'm still here. Okay. Um, and yeah, thank you for the time and we'll be happy to, to answer questions.
Great. Well done. Great presentation. And, uh, you know, you, you're doing a lot of great work with, with, um, what you have. And, and for some, you're, you know, moving fast and for some we move too slow, right? And I think we might hear from some of those tonight. But it's a tough job and we're always kind of trying to move forward any way we can. One thing I did that did strike me just as an observation was our, our struggles it looked like with water conservation. And, you know, so maybe that's something, again, that talk about at the retreat that, that, you know, how do we, with all of these different water providers, is there a role that we can play just to help, you know, coordinate, maybe not coordinates the word, but get the word out of how important it is to conserve in other ways that we can. I know the city as a whole, through its central watering systems and things like that, have really taken a, a large step. But I think throughout the whole community. And so we have quite a few hands up. And then I just also want to caveat that Counselor Johnson has a couple of slides that she wanted to share. And when we get to those, I want to emphasize that those are her slides and not, uh, being brought forth by staff or part of the presentation. So, Ms. Vincent?
Yes. Hi, um, and I apologize, Jonathan, for not getting this in beforehand, but it just happened recently. Um, Council LaBierre and myself, we met with, um, uh, somebody in the building industry. And he said that they do lead buildings, but they don't bother going through the certification. So I didn't know if there was probably a cost associated with that or whatever. But I thought, well, maybe Lakewood is getting, is shortchanging themselves a little bit. And I didn't know, um, if we could, um, have some interplay or something where these people who are LEED certified and are doing things, um, well, like the flats at Two Creeks, um, in that vein, if they could kind of get recognized maybe for that? Or do they strictly have to be certified LEED? That was a real long question.
Yeah, no, but it's a, it's a really good question. And I think, um, the, the answer is the LEED program itself is, um, tightly administered with really strict standards. So if they want to actually earn a LEED designation as LEED certified or LEED gold, silver, gold, platinum, any of those levels, they need to go through the, um, Green Building Council's process for that. Um, we have various, there's a various ways they could be recognized and that we do recognize those types of effort. One is through our sustainability awards, uh, program, which is still alive and well, even though we couldn't come in front of you this year. Um, we were, uh, did our best to innovate and did a lot of social media push and, uh, still recognized some amazing projects. So that's one way we've definitely been able to recognize, um, green building and sustainable development. And then back to the new enhanced development menu. New developments over 20,000 square feet, um, trigger the requirement to meet that new, um, let, set of standards. And under that, uh, they have to earn a certain number of points. And it's a, if you recall from when we went through this, there's a menu of potential ways they could do that. And when they are 50,000 square feet or larger, um, they need to get more points. And the great thing about that is a lot of those things that maybe they wouldn't, they've been doing, but aren't going to get their plaque for, um, can earn them points towards that set of requirements. So, um,
Okay.
They can certainly, moving forward, if someone's doing those things but aren't going to go through the full LEED certification, um, we're going to be able to see that through probably their efforts to achieve their required points. And what we really like about that too is it's very much, um, we're able to really tailor that to the site, right? So if it's a site that is a real close proximity to transit or bike infrastructure is, it's a gap in bike infrastructure, uh, we can try to steer them towards those points, right? If it's a, makes sense because of its location to do renewable energy or to provide, um, urban agriculture opportunities or food production on site, uh, we can steer them that way. It's, it's, um, you know, public amenities, public art, uh, efficiency, renewables. I mean, there's a huge menu, right? And they, so we can really tailor it. Um, so we're excited. And the first developments that are being required to do that are in the process right now. So I hope that next year, we're going to be able to come with pictures and a lot of, um, display of what that's helping, helping do.
Okay. I, I'll continue working with them then, because this is something that's really important to all of Lakewood. And, and they're doing it. So I would like them to get some sort of recognition for that. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I have, uh, Counselors Gutwin, Springsteen, LaBierre.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of comments and then some questions. Um, you know, I guess first I just want to start by saying how I, I am so proud of how much progress has been made in the last five years, um, since this plan was adopted. And I think we have a lot of big wins to celebrate, um, as a community. Uh, and that, you know, it's an incredibly efficient program. The amount that's been able to be accomplished with volunteers and, you know, relatively small budget, it's, it's incredible. Um, I think you also, uh, kind of hit this tone in your, um, your presentation. You know, there's the second piece, which is, but we still have so much work to do. And this is something that I am very, I'm very concerned about. I'm very worried about. Um, and I, you know, as I, uh, spoke to voters at the door, I know that clean air and clean water, it's really important to a lot of people. It's one of the top issues that I heard about at the doors. Um, I think that if I were to go out there now and knock doors, I'd hear a lot more about clean air even than I did a year ago. Um, and so I just want to voice that, um, it's, it's still so pressing and so urgent that we continue to make progress on these issues. Um, we're, we're really seeing the impacts, um, right now, every day. Um, and so, you know, and I, I, I know that others in the community share this feeling of just being concerned about what future we're leaving our kids, um, what messes we're leaving them to have to clean up. So, um, with that in mind, uh, you know, I, I'm both proud and, um, feel a sense of urgency to continue. Um, so I, I want to thank you for the progress and, and also, you know, look to the future. Um, a couple of things that I want to just highlight and then questions that I wanted to ask. Um, one thing I really love in this plan is that we have the triple bottom line and that we look at economic sustainability and equity on every issue. Um, that's something that I would really love to see in every staff report moving forward is fiscal impact, sustainability impact and equity impact. And the reason why is, um, well, I mean, a bunch of reasons. But I think that, uh, as we face limited budgets moving forward, it's going to be more and more important that every dollar we spend, um, you know, hits as many different goals as possible and that we're just thoughtful and mindful, um, of, of every use of every dollar. Um, and those are some of our core values. So that's something that I may bring up at the retreat. Um, now to my, a- and I just also want to really thank you for the discussion about equity in the introduction and just the impacts that we're seeing, um, the disparate impacts in our community. I think it's really important to talk about it if we're even going to be able to address, um, address equity issues in our community. They're, they're happening here. address equity issues in our community, they're they're happening here in Lakewood and we need to be talking about that. So I I really appreciate just the honesty in the the introduction. Now for my questions. And I apologize because I did not submit these early. And so if there is, if we need to get answers later, that is totally fine. It's completely my fault. My first question is just on page 15. About we're, we've made a lot of progress on municipal buildings. Is there a plan to further close the gap? And I know we had a proposal about rooftop solar, and I think that was mentioned in the presentation as well online, that there were some potentials there. Seems like it might also be a good cost savings opportunity to reduce our budget, you know, electrical budget. So just wondering if there's an update on that.
That's a great question. Is it possible to bring Jeff Wong, our new team member on energy, water and climate into address some of those questions specifically about energy? I can, I can say we did start some assessments on the rooftop. But I think Jeff's been looking at them in more detail and will be able to give you a much better better answer. So I and you all have not met Jeff. This was the new position that was created before the world took a strange turn. And Jeff joined us right before that. So he's been in the office, I think, maybe two weeks total and otherwise been working. Jeff, did you hear councillor Gutwine's question about the energy?
I did. Thanks councillor Gutwine. I'd love to give you a quick update. So last year, our energy consultant, McKinstry Consulting, did perform an initial analysis at three of our largest facilities. That was Carmody and the Public Safety Center as well as Green Mountain Rec Center. And they found that that basically their summary was that all three rooftops were viable for solar installation. And they provided some initial cost estimates as well as payback periods and a general idea of how much solar power could be produced as well as what the cost offsets would look like. So that's what we received from them. And kind of the next step for me is to take a deeper dive into some of the cost impacts associated with their proposal because I know that of course, budget is a concern right now.
Great. Thank you. Well, that that would be really exciting to me. If we if we saw solar on our city buildings in addition to the cost savings and the air quality, I think it's also really shows the community that we're walking the walk to, even though we're doing so much behind the scenes, they might may not be able to see all of that. So that's great. I also just wanted to voice again, I know I always bring this up every time, but just how excited I will be to see the slash facility. It's we it's it's something that we already have money for. That budget was set aside and will have huge impacts in terms of reaching that goal that we're behind on in terms of waste. I hear a lot about that in the community as well. So I know that that's being worked on, but just would love to see that come to fruition and get those yeah, to start being able to use that at some point. The other question I had was Mayor Paul kind of brought this up too, but just about the Bear Creek watershed. It's pretty concerning to look at the potential flooding and other issues. Are we, do we have kind of a is there a plan component to what we can do to address this? And that may be a topic for another day, but.
That's probably a topic for another day. There was a in the actual report, I think you saw the article that the Bear Creek Water Association shared with us. We wanted to highlight that because they're one of, you know, a partner organization that has gone through this exercise of running multiple climate models of what the future might look like. And then I'm using that to assess the potential impacts, right? And when we talk about conducting a climate vulnerability assessment for the city as a whole, that's the type of that's a good example of the kind of information we could glean from that, right? Like we, there's no certain outcomes, but here's a variety of outcomes that could we could see based on various scenarios. And there's some common themes that showed through that, right? Regardless of the kind of, you know, different scenarios they put through. So I think it's a great question. That's why we highlighted it in terms of their plans. I don't have that. We could certainly arrange to reach out to them and and connect you with with that.
Thank you. I do have a couple more questions, but I'm gonna I feel like I've been talking a long time, so I'm gonna turn it over to someone else. And then if there's time at the end, I'll circle back with a few more questions.
Thank you. So Ms. Springsteen, then Mr. LeBir, then Ms. Johnson.
Hi there. Thank you for being here. The work you're doing is is super important for our city, pressing, urgent. As we're seeing this summer with so many wildfires around the country and in our state and temperatures are soaring, this kind of work is so important to bring to our city. I wanted to to ask you your opinion about something because it's something that's been brought to me by constituents. That there is a perception out there that because the sustainability division is under the planning department, that this presents a conflict of interest. And that perhaps a separation of the departments would create more progress, more independence. A lot of people view the planning department as as very partial toward developers who might not be so sustainability minded. And I just wondered your take on that and how I can respond to my constituents who have those concerns. Thanks.
That's a, that's a hard question to answer. I I will say that there's been no I can't think of a single example where our work in terms of moving forward to implement the sustainability plan is at all at odds with or been hindered by being as part of the planning department. In in a lot of ways, it's advantageous. We are doing a lot of work to ensure that new development is as sustainable as possible and that work. I mean, there's kind of two big buckets when we look at the community, right? With it, when you think about energy, when you think about water, you think about the built environment, it's we've got what's come before us and that's often the hardest piece of retrofitting and changing, making buildings more energy efficient. Right? Finding room for bike infrastructure when roads are already built a certain way over, you know, a long period of time or inherited legacy infrastructure. And then there's the new stuff that's coming online. And so being in the plan department really has helped us. Some of our greatest accomplishments is really, you know, so far I can point to is that we're getting good changes in our codes and our zoning ordinance, our building code to really help make sure new development does become more sustainable. So I I don't view that as a limitation. There are a lot of different models in a lot of different cities. We work really closely with sustainability folks around the whole state, around the country. And many of those folks are located in planning departments. Many are in city managers' offices, some work directly for mayors, depending on form of government. They all have pros and cons, right? You know, how political they might get, how you know, there may be some places in our organization where it's more advantageous to help get buy-in across different departments. Sorry, looks like I was breaking up. But overall, I don't, I don't view that as a as a limitation on anything that we're doing currently. Hopefully, most of that came through.
Yes, sir. Ms. Springsteen, does that exhaust your questions for this moment? All right. So we have Mr. LeBir, Ms. Johnson, and then I have Ms. Gutwine again, but I'm going to go to the folks that are on the phone and have them do the public input as well. So I'll go with Mr. LeBir, then Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks to Jonathan for all you do and your team. And we've had a lot of good conversations about sustainability. So I always appreciate your insightful comments and competencies. You make me feel bad because you know a lot more about this stuff than I do. But I know I've asked you this multiple times and I didn't get a bunch of questions in early, but you know, I figured this is kind of an ongoing conversation, all of these things anyway. So I don't feel too bad about that, but I know I've asked you before about climate change, vulnerability studies and climate preparedness plans and you know, are are those things that you think we still need to do today? Or are we getting by with what we have? Or is that something that council should maybe be considering as a taking it on? Because I know that might require some actual council action. If we don't just continue to go with what we're using in Colorado's assessments.
A hundred percent, in my opinion, we need to be doing that. And I wish we had been able to do it earlier. I think everybody, right? You can always look back and wish you already had plans in place. So the sooner the better. And the trick will be how we can get the right people in the room. Many of these issues overlap with public health and other entities that are busy right now, right? And we have limited resources, but the good news is we have one of our new team members who who filled the empty position from Ms. Coppidge. Caitlin hasn't bugged long. And if you want to know kind of what this process looks like, she's standing by, ready. And I'm sure we'd be happy to talk about what that might look like. But we have someone on board who has been working hard to scope this, understand the process involved, who needs to be at the table, and is hunting actively for resources that we can leverage, right? There's a lot of organizations in the space. There's other communities we can beg, borrow and steal there.
Great. I appreciate that. Another question is there are a lot of these, a lot of these issues just are going to require council action. And I'm just wondering if as a sort of process question, are we anticipating that these things are going to just come to us? Or are these things that we should maybe be engaging in more as a council or maybe workshopping as a council as what we want to take on and what we don't want to take on? I don't know if that's if anyone can answer that.
Well, I I think sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So I I was just going to say to the to the process portion of that for us, for this body, it really is a matter of our priorities via our planning, right? And so we have a dashboard that is is very active, updated quarterly and kind of goes through what we want to achieve and how we want to achieve it. So I'd say for our portion, that's something that that needs to be discussed, you know, at our planning retreat or things along, you know, as far as our bigger goals of what we want to do or how we want to prioritize. And then I would say secondarily, and I'll defer to Jonathan, if there's action that council, you know, needs to take or things like that, that can be driven up, I think that does flow our way as well.
Well, I asked that question because, for example, you know, one of these items in here is talking about the lighting, the streetlights and, you know, whether they're LED or not. You know, that's something that was on council's agenda earlier in the year and got pushed. I don't know if it's coming back or if that needs us to ask for it to come back or, you know, what kind of plans are.
I think like, like the comp plan, there's a lot in the sustainability plan that doesn't originate or you know, kind of fall on the shoulders directly of the sustainability division. So when it comes to the street lighting, our public works department and others have been in talks with XL and looking at all the options and are diving into that. So I'd have to defer to where they are in that process. But certainly there's a variety of pathways that could be taken. And luckily we can learn from some experiences of nearby communities as well. We know some have taken certain pathways and others have taken other made other choices on how to do it. And that'll help us probably come up with the best strategy. But I'm not aware at this very moment that it's coming forward any, you know, any time immediately.
I appreciate that. And I know that's a little bit in the weeds. And some of that's for us, council, to to take a look at. Because I, you know, here's my my thoughts is just that you know, I am, I think councillor woman Gutwine kind of alluded to this and councillor woman Springsteen, but you know, I I'm really concerned. You know, I was in California just a week and a half ago and it was on fire. I couldn't, and the whole state was on fire. And it was bad. And I get here and the smoke has followed us, you know, here. And it's been a bad month. And I don't think this is abating anytime soon. And I understand that Lakewood can't solve that problem, but that doesn't mean we can't do our part. And I know that that's what this plan originally set out to do is is to make sure that we do our part. And you know, some things are on track. There's a lot of good stuff happening. And some of that and it's for all sorts of different reasons. Some of it's because XL Energy has sped up their goals on providing more renewable resources. Some of that is because we've really pushed to make some of these things happen. So I'm just looking for avenues of where we as a council can lead on this and make something happen. You know, I really think we need some some rocket fuel on this thing and move it ahead. And I think if if there's other ways of doing it, if there's you know, creating stronger goals, more ambitious goals, if there's other things that we can do. You know, I I think the council, we should figure out a way to engage as a council and do that. Affordable housing, for example, is in here. You know, we've talked a lot about that. There's some littler things we could do. We talked a little bit about the development menu. I was thinking this the other day. I was like, you know, we should, we should be looking at putting affordable housing in that development menu as well. If people want to use some of their points to build some affordable housing, that seems like it could be another potential option. But anyway, I don't want to keep going on and on because I don't want the council and everybody to fall asleep. I just want you all to know, you know, I want to be supportive. I want the council to engage as many of these things that we need to engage on to move things as fastly and quickly as we can. And if we can set out more ambitious goals, I'm all on board. And let's just figure out a process to get us to that conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll go to Ms. Johnson. Just as a side note, some of the council members are having a little bit of trouble. So if you see them fade out, that is their feeds or some of our technology. So they are popping in and out. And if you have an opportunity or you didn't get an opportunity to speak, just let me know. All right, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Sean, I'd like to say that looking at the document and reading it, Lakewood is the leader under your direction regarding sustainability. And I appreciate that and I want to thank you. I'd like to applaud the work that you've done to reduce our energy consumption in terms of electricity and water. That's a very important, and we are role models in that. I hope other people can look to you and are contacting you. The zero waste program is also a role for other cities and frankly, states. And I am especially very pleased with the work of the sustainability neighborhood programs to do the the work on our environment. I love it. But I think even more than the work on the environment that they're doing is that they create community. And in one, on page 41, it states the importance of knowing neighbors. It couldn't, couldn't be well stated any other way. I do have a few questions. On page 10, the document cites that the upper watershed can expect a temperature increase of 5.18 Fahrenheit to 6.2 Fahrenheit. I don't expect you to have the the reference now, but at some point I would appreciate knowing what that reference is. On page eight, this was interesting to me. It's quoted that the crisis, talking about COVID, also proved that black and Hispanic communities face disproportionate impacts in nearly every metric from the numbers of COVID-19 cases and deaths. from the numbers of COVID-19 cases and deaths. And, uh, frankly, as a nurse, I really want to understand that better myself. You know, there's something going on there that's important to understand. So I reached out to Dr. Johnson and here is what he said. It is true that minorities have been harder hit by COVID-19 than whites have. There are several theories about why this might be. Some have admitted that early on in the pandemic, they might not have taken it as seriously as they should have. In addition, they do have a higher incidence of comorbidities. They do have multi-generational housing situations. They tend to have more frontline critical jobs and were unable to stay home. And they tend to need to use public transportation more. All of these things increase their risk. And there frankly, he said that there might be some other associations. So the jury is still out. However, my master's is actually in community health nursing. It's like a public health degree. Um, and so someone that's involved in healthcare and public policy, when I read through what he had to say, there were a couple of things that came to mind for me. When the minorities did not take the pandemic seriously, you wonder if there is a lack of trust in government information. I think that there needs to be a little bit more discussed about that to find out why. Uh, a need for a healthier diet. He was talking about comorbidities. I personally actually grew up on sauerkraut and pork cooks and we've improved our diet on this end. But comorbidities have a high nexus to diet. Multi-generational living. Frankly, I believe this is sweet. Our families are our greatest strength. And if parents and their children and the grandparents are living together, I like it. I have a very small family. I think that's awesome. Um, he talked about frontline, uh, critical jobs. And, you know, that's double edged sword. Uh, paramedics and healthcare workers are also in a critical area. But it also meant that those folks didn't lose their jobs. So that's the good side of that. And then the last thing he was talking about, a higher use of public transportation. Um, and I know our city is encouraging multimodal transportation, which includes light rail. Uh, Walt has stopped writing it and basically it's empty at this point. So there's something there that we need to know more about. Um, okay, on page 11, it says multiple studies and reports for Colorado predict average annual temperatures increasing by a minimum of 2.5 Fahrenheit with summers warming by 5.7 Fahrenheit. Um, winters by 3.5 by 2050. And you know what? That, um, frankly, that got me to thinking. We are projecting 30 years in the future. So anybody can go on to this site. It's the National Oceanic, um, Atmospheric Association, NOAA. And in the last 30 years, if we're going to go forward 30 years, then it's fair to go back 30 years. I've sent, uh, some slides and maybe they're, they can be up at this point. You can look at those slides and maybe the temperature has changed by one degree. But it doesn't look like we are imminently warming up. Um, it's debatable. And, you know, there are some people that can actually say that it's flat. We are making serious economic decisions and, uh, based on what we see as climate change. You know, at one point, um, I suggested that maybe we have a study session and invite people that have a variety of perspectives because I honestly think there is something to learn uh, from a lot of voices out there, a lot of different scientists. And, um, maybe now's the time to revisit that. I truly appreciated your disclaimer when it said with all climate modeling, there is an understanding that future conditions can vary from predictions. Thank you. That's, that's very true. Um, you know, the sustainability document codifies and leads our public policy decisions. Uh, so it, you know, getting together some folks to actually get information on a variety of perspectives and, and learning from everybody, since this document is guiding so many things, I think it's fair. On, um, page 15, it says, we will ensure affordable energy. At some point, if you could please describe how the city is going to do this, how are we going to ensure affordable energy? It also lists under targets to reduce citywide water use by 20% by 2025. That's awesome. But, and who wouldn't agree with that? But we also are, um, interested in high density housing. Uh, there's a lot of water there. And just by the way, marijuana grows, consume a considerable amount of water and electricity. On page 25, it says Lakewood wants to foster self-sufficiency and upward morbidity. I couldn't agree more. But please describe how, Jonathan. When I was looking at our core values, uh, there's really not a core value to address this. But there is something that's kind of interesting and close. And it says to continually evaluate the purpose and scope of government and adjust programs as appropriate. So maybe at some point we could, uh, find out how we can make that happen, actually. On page 55, um, it states that there are significant disparities between racial and ethnic groups. I don't necessarily disagree. But I think that we need to have some data to support that for what's happening in Lakewood. On page 30, we're stating that 52% of households do not earn a living wage. That just has a very difficult ring to it. Uh, and I'm just wondering if this takes into account the many, uh, metro west housing facilities that we have. Uh, they certainly probably are struggling with minimum wage. Oh, on page 47, it states, one of the targets is to increase the acreage of functional and healthy natural ecosystems. I agree. But how are we going to do then? We're, we're leaving some things out there, but we're not really giving an idea of how we're going to do it. Remember, this document is a public policy document that is guiding conversation and narrative. Um, and then on page 53, we state a target is to lower Lakewood's daily per capita vehicle miles traveled by 10% by 2025. Well, just a reminder that the light rail frankly is running empty. Um, and our community is aging and not all seniors are going to be riding bikes. Um, so just a couple of thoughts to ponder. Thanks, Jonathan. But actually your document is well thought out. It's got a lot of great points in it. But I think that we can, uh, look at some of those things and, um, have some ways on saying how we're going to do this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think, uh, all this great discussion, maybe council should get a podcast. Could be quite interesting. All right. So we have some folks on the line who, um, would like to speak. And so now I'll open the public input portion. And again, this is, uh, similar to public comment, but geared towards what we're talking about this evening. You'll have three minutes and it sounds like the order in which this group would like to participate. We'll start with 1458, then 4347, 3852, and then 3048. Ms. Alizar, is that what you have?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and get started. Um, just give us your name and, and ward or address and we'll roll with that.
That's 2458.
All right, 1458. If you want to press star six to unmute yourself and we will begin.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and City Council and staff. I'm Lauren Meo with Clean Energy Lakewood. In these challenging times, our city has continued to bring focus on clean energy and the environment. We thank you for creating the first position focused on clean energy and water. We also thank council for renewing sustainability as a top strategic priority for 2020. As said, Lakewood continues to lag significantly on attaining key sustainability goals. Let's keep in mind similar sized town with similar goals have a team of three dozen people working to implement their plan. And to the question of Councilwoman Springsteen, uh, in a situation where we can't really increase budgets or staff in the department, elevating its profile in the management hierarchy of the town is a great idea. Given the current budget constraints we face, we want to highlight opportunities that the city can focus on now. Opportunities with very little to no fiscal cost, often with positive revenues to help balance budgets. One, establish a more firm timeline for municipal solar and energy efficiency deployment. Although these improvements require investments, they can be financed at abnormally low rates these days. These improvements will lower the operating costs of municipal buildings more than reimbursing the capital and its low interest, thus helping city cash flows. Two, work on better community-wide energy efficiency, starting with benchmarking requirements for businesses. Other leading Colorado cities which have done this saw two to four percent efficiency gains at the onset simply by creating attention to energy usage. Over the longer run, this will inform many businesses to take further action. Three, the long presentation Clean Energy Lakewood gave to council during the building code upgrade has made headways. There's more in your package about this. Uh, the city sustainability advisory committee submitted a concrete proposal to council this summer. Please schedule the review of the proposal for a council meeting, hopefully before the end of the year. Four, adopt a quadruple wind solar program for Lakewood residents. We've mentioned before an interesting solar program for average income and low income housing whereby a private firm works in partnership with the city. This program will enable perhaps thousands of residents to go solar. The resulting savings are typically 40% of the electric bills of the participating residents.
Thirty seconds.
Equally between participants and the city. And you will hear more, you will hear more from Mark Simmons tonight, the CEO of Combined Energy Technology. Given the delays in identifying land for a solar farm, we invite council to explode, explore the faster, uh, the faster track, sorry. These initiatives in combination with others.
Up your comments.
Speakers after me will help the city gather new funding, balance its budget and catch up with the implementation of its established sustainability goals. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just to remind, I, I think this is all also on Lakewood Speaks under your comments as well. Thank you. All right. Ms. Alizar, who's the next?
Uh, caller 4347.
Okay, 4347, if you'd like to press.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, this is Ron Horseman. Dear Mayor Paul and council members, I'm 11 Ward 5. I want to give the next two opportunities for the city of Lakewood to further expand. One is the tree canopy program. This produced many benefits related to energy and reduces the impacts on climate. First, trees provide shade. Uh, if they're positioned properly, they can reduce the use of mechanical air conditioning by at least 50% and in some cases up to 95%. Second, trees reduce the heat out in effect. Temperature can reduce from two to nine degrees Fahrenheit and surface temperatures can be reduced from 20 to 45 degrees when shaded. Third, trees add value to properties. Fourth, trees add beauty to the entire community. Fifth, trees help address the issue of climate change. It can be part of the solution. A recent study in Baltimore, Maryland and Washington DC showed that one of the hottest days last summer parks were a cooling oasis as much as 17 degrees cooler than parts of the city. Trees can minimize flooding, clean water around them and clean the air we breathe. We recommend the city partner with XL Sustainable Neighborhoods, businesses, state park and rec departments and others to offer two free ceilings to every metered property in the community and provide printed siting, planning and pruning guidance as part of the program. Number six, change the city's trash hauler requirements to a pay as you throw and curb side, plus curb side recycling. The low recycle rate in Lakewood can be drastically increased by requiring trash haulers operating in the city to provide a pay as you throw trash pickup with free and no additional fee from the base rate, curb side recycling to all customers. Pay as you throw systems make households that put more garbage pay more. This simple concept has been embraced by more than 7,000 communities in the United States. Pay as you throw has many advantages. First, the programs are flexible and quick to implement. Second, they have an advantage over simply implementing recycling programs because pay as you throw encourages not only recycling, but also composting, source reduction, reuse and other responsible methods of dealing with waste. Third, the systems have a huge impact on diversion, reducing residential disposal by about 17%. Given the recent failure of the single trash hauler ballot question, we suggest more focused and limited changes that the city may implement without a ballot process. Pay as you throw plus curb side recycling requires.
Thirty seconds.
If, if the city finds these charges still require a ballot question, we would then suggest more limited question that does not affect people's ability to choose their hauler. The ballot question should be, should Lakewood require its trash haulers to include recycling pickup and to bill consumers based on how much trash they put out? That concludes my comments. Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horseman. All right, Ms. Alizar, who is next up?
Caller ending in 3852.
All right, 3852. Good evening. Welcome. We'll start your three minutes.
Um, good evening.
Oh, you muted. Can you unmute yourself? Star nine, star six.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Dr. Elizabeth Molina and I'm a resident of Ward 1. And I would like to reiterate point seven, eight, nine of the documents submitted by Clean Energy Lakewood on LakewoodSpeaks.org. Um, I wanted to start with banning or taxing single-use plastics and styrofoam. Uh, as of April 2019, about 200 cities around the United States have ruled in place that either forbid or tax plastic bags. And bag bans or bag fees have been proven to be quick and effective ways to reduce plastic pollution. When Washington DC imposed a five cent fee on single-use plastic bags, there was a 60% reduction in plastic bag litter in, on Acosta River within five months. Second, I wanted to talk about promoting bike use in Lakewood as an alternative mode of transportation to reduce emissions and fossil fuel usage. Biking has numerous benefits, including improving personal health and less impact on the environment, but also it's better on the pocketbook. And to stimulate bike use, the city needs to work on increasing intersection safety and improving connectedness of the bike trails. Uh, next I wanted to address including sustainability as a part of every conversation or issue in city planning. Uh, staff reports on ordinances and resolutions always include budgetary impacts, but we also need to include sustainability impacts as well as an equity lens. Sustainability should be an integral since, a consideration in decision-making because it has systematic health and environmental cost implications on our community. Considering the many challenges our community is facing around the current COVID crisis, we must also keep in mind that there's a much larger challenge of climate change kind of looming over us. Finally, we would like to point out the tremendous job creation benefits of clean energy in our time of high unemployment. See also our document. With this, we urge you to bring ever increasing focus on achieving the city's sustainability goals, starting with concrete low cost and budget generating sustainability actions the city can take now. This is a win, 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 win situation. Win for the environment and what we leave our children, win for current residents who reduce their energy cost. Win for current residents who reduce their energy cost. Win for all current residents who benefit from cleaner air and energy. Win for the city who can take a positive leadership role while helping its budgets. And a win for job creation in our community with all its positive implications on the community and the city. Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you, Doctor. All right, and I guess next up would be.
Caller ending in three zero four eight.
Three zero four eight, good evening. If you'd like to press.
Hi, this is Mark Simmons. I'm the CEO of Combined Energy Technologies in Denver, Colorado. And the group has asked me to speak tonight about our unique program. One of the problems with getting more solar, especially onto low-income houses, is their inability to get loans to finance a system for their homes. And our program addresses this. It actually applies to any homeowner that wants to sign up. The city would launch the program with our aid. We would do most of the work and we cover all the costs. Homeowners can sign up, pay a deposit to the city and get a twenty-year program where our contractors install energy efficiency and solar on each home. The homeowners will save about twenty percent off of what they uh would have paid for energy. They'd save almost all of their Excel energy bill. Uh, they would pay the city. Uh, and the city would collect the money, keep twenty percent and pay our investors. This doesn't require credit worthiness on the part of the homeowners or income statement, as long as the city accepts them, they're in. We've launched this program in Colorado and California and plan to launch it in other states. I happen to live here and it's near and dear to my heart for this program to go statewide. So the city gets an income stream and you'll see in the addendum to the document tonight what that will be. Uh, in Colorado, tentatively, Energy Outreach Colorado, the nonprofit, has agreed to grant the money to low-income homeowners to pay the deposit. So there's no barrier to this program at all for the low-income homeowners. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, looks like we still have.
One more.
Okay.
One eight six five.
All right, good evening, caller one eight six five. If you'd like to press star six to unmute, we'll get your three minutes rolling. All right.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is Bill Schor, two three oh seven South Gray Drive. I first want to start off and uh really compliment all of you and the city manager and her staff for keeping Lakewood strong during COVID and its impacts. For the city manager to not furlough or let anybody go is a tremendous thing. High compliments to her. Uh, I support the greater coordination we're now seeing between economic development and ecological sustainability. As you meet these challenges, you're moving toward a greater capacity to establish economic sustainability. This may mean an organic consolidation of economic development and ecological sustainability operations in the near term. Despite the achievements and potential of your ecological sustainability operations, there's a deficiency of its services as applied to lower income and working-class communities. This is certainly not intentional or reflective of their high-quality nature uh of of the ecological operations. It's just that presently up to now, there is greater demand, interest and ability to engage in economic sustainability by higher-income households. I urge less planning and more direct action applied to lower-income working-class communities. And this would help plug this deficiency, such as the bike donation effort that I suggested. This summer, I had the privilege of being a census numerator. I was all throughout Lakewood uh getting two or three hundred households into the count uh so that the population count is good here. And one of the things I saw were just so many idle kids. They didn't know what to do. If they had just had a bike, they could get to parks, they could get to facilities, they could get to schools. And you would be creating a new generation of bike riders. They'd get their exercise, they'd learn responsibility. It's these kind of direct action, low-cost measures that'll go a long way and they complement some of these high-tech, higher-income services. I urge you to look at that. But you're doing a good job and we'll be in here trying to help you and uh the best of luck. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great, thank you. And again, we also received your email uh also, so thank you for that. Ms. Alizar, anybody else in the queue for public input?
No, there isn't.
Okay, I will now close that. And again, we have a a great group of folks that will always be advocating and and trying to push. We appreciate that. And again, we did receive your comments via Lakewood Speaks. So we'll continue with um any more questions or comments, Ms. Gutwine?
Thank you. Um, actually, a number of my other questions were asked by others, so just to, just a couple more. One is just, could you tell us a little bit more about the tree canopy canopy program? Um, I am not as familiar with that program and what the future of it could look like.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, keep having some connectivity trouble here at City Hall tonight. Um, so we have targets in the plan for um, you know, reaching a higher percentage of tree canopy coverage. Um, and so far, we do not have any um specific kind of holistic program in place to make that happen. Uh, we've had some one-off projects take place to try to get uh more trees planted. Uh, there's opportunities through site planning and new development to add to the tree canopy coverage. And we've had some great efforts through our Sustainable Neighborhoods. Morse Park in particular um has planted hundreds of new trees as part of their um projects in Morse Park. So um as far as what the future might look like, um, that was a really um interesting uh idea that was presented through public comment tonight. Might be worth exploring to understand costs and, you know, uh water usage and all that that type of stuff, but certainly that's that's a great idea. Um, we've also got for the first time this year, better data on where we are with tree canopy coverage. Uh, Dr. Cog um had data that allowed us to, you know, uh understand, you know, coverage through uh remote sensing. Um, so that's really helpful. What that can really show us is, you know, where we really have major gaps and that might help us strategize where to add tree canopy coverage. There's also some innovation and exciting um opportunities happening around carbon sequestration and tree canopy coverage. So I recently uh learned uh from some peers in uh Marin County and actually in Boulder about some efforts to look at ways that you could um actually create revenue or help support tree canopy projects by um calculating the offsets that are generated from carbon sequestration through your tree canopy coverage and allowing that to be bought or sold in the market. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that fits us perfectly, but there's just like so much happening in that space to look at innovative ways to help communities build out their tree canopy coverage, how to fund it, how to maintain them. So um, it's probably worth looking into all that.
Wow, that's really interesting. And just one more follow-up on that is is kind of the best practice to uh build in or to add trees in gaps? Um, or is it just, you know, anywhere we can get more trees is good, um? A little both, whatever's practical or?
I I think we want the right trees in the right locations so that they will survive, right? Provide the benefits that were mentioned through, you heard through public comment, that long list of benefits uh means getting them in the right location. So, um, and the right species. You know, to find the blend of trees that can withstand our harsh uh, you know, freezings in the summertime and warm days in the in the winter and the winds and all that and the water. So um, it's all about that. You know, the best time, they always say the best time to plant a tree was fifty years ago and the second best time is today.
Yeah, that's a great quote. I think um I, yeah, I love this because for all the benefits mentioned, and then again, it's it's something where people can really see the impacts. Um, see what we're doing and and experience the benefits um in in kind of a more tangible way. Um, and then, you know, like the in the map that you have here of the canopy coverage, you know, Colfax Avenue area has a lot of red showing that there's not a lot of trees and a lot of green space, I think we all know. Um, that would really be great to get some green up there. Um, and then I just, uh, last thing, I just want to make a quick or I just want to address something else um that was kind of brought up in conversation. Um, I just want to say that, you know, in terms of racial disparities in COVID nineteen, um, there's a lot of research and information that shows it it's really about structural discrimination and structural racism, limited access to health and wealth um for people of color. And Jeff Coe actually recently just declared um structural racism a public health crisis. So I just wanted to say. Um, and I guess my last comment is uh sustainability was um one of our top four priorities as a council at our retreat. It was one of our top five the year before. Um, so it it definitely it has been um by this council, you know, it it's there, it's in the top five. So I think that in terms of what we're, what we're talking about in terms of planning, you know, we did pencil this in as a priority and um I I think it it is just really hard to figure out the best way, like, should we propose specific things that we want to see? Who kind of takes the lead? And I think we're just all trying to figure that out, but thank you for all the progress and, you know, I look forward to what we're going to do next.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else have any other questions or comments related to this portion? Cool. Well, again, nicely done. Thank you for the presentation and um we will see you again sometime.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time. Hope you all stay well. Thanks.
Okay, so that exhausts um our agenda items. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hodson before we go to council reports.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize our city clerk because this evening is our last evening with her. Friday is Michelle's last day. Um, Michelle has been with the organization, I think, for about eleven years. And if you think about the work that she does, she runs elections. She handles minutes of meetings. She handles licensing of all kinds. She conducts hearings. She handles um campaign complaints. She has to be very detail-oriented. She runs the department that's kind of the the front line when um when the citizens come and need something. So she's kind of the information desk as well. Um, Michelle has always done her job with such professionalism, with such dignity. She's very kind. She's very thoughtful. And we're gonna, we're just gonna miss Miss Michelle. We're gonna miss Michelle just dearly because she's been a wonderful asset to the city of Lakewood. And I just wanted to tell her thank you. The management team had a chance to um give our appreciation to her just this last week. And I keep trying to, I'm begging her not to leave, but good for her. She gets to go and enjoy life um with her family and spend time with her family. But I just want to take a moment to publicly thank Michelle for just the wonderful spirit that she's brought to this job and the wonderful work that she's done. We're lucky we have Bernie and Bernie's not leaving. And um we've got a really good team behind Michelle who are are just really committed to this organization and to the city. So we're lucky, but we're not lucky because because we're going to lose Michelle. But I just wanted to honor her and really um let her know how precious she is to all of us. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. That was very kind. And certainly, Ms. Malard, if you want to say anything, you're welcome to. If you'd rather not, you're fine.
Well, all those wonderful things she said were really because of Bernie and the CCO staff. They they just made me look good and I'm so grateful for them and and um grateful for my time at the city of Lakewood. I've loved every second of it. Um, so many wonderful people here. And I'm super grateful. I miss everybody. But you you're in great, great hands with the CCO staff and Kathy leading them and Ben helping them too. So um, I'll miss everybody, but thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, so let's go into, oh, before we go to the other reports, do you have anything else, Ms. Hodson, you need to add or brief on?
No, I don't think so. We do have a meeting next week and it's it's going to be long, so so be rested up, please. So thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, so we'll start with Ward one. Counselors from Ward one, any any reports? Or if you're on a committee that you served on and want to give any sort of update on a meeting that you had, that'd be great, too.
Thank you. You know, something kind of interesting. I got a phone call today from a lady telling me that the government had mandated that Excel not use coal-fired plants anymore. And um, of course, it got my curiosity up, so I called Preston Gibson. And that, of course, is not true. I don't know what she was actually going to sell because when I started asking questions, she said, "Thank you," and hung up. But just know that there's a lot of interesting phone calls out there and please beware. Thank you.
Mr. Amel.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I do want to set the record straight. During our development dialogue meeting last week, I mentioned that Fossil Ridge Metro District number three had not uh replaced the developers' board members with community members. I understand that now that they have done so, and I just want to set the record straight. Uh, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Ward two.
Um, I just want to point out, first of all, to uh Councilman Bida, you have this great big white thing behind your head. And every once in a while, when you move, it looks like your head's exploded and disappeared. So I thought I'd just give you a heads up about that. And then um, Michelle, I'm going to miss you terribly because you've always bailed me out of things and have been so kind in doing that. So just from my heart, I wish you, I wish you the best. So, and thank you.
Yep, thanks, Sharon. And uh, yes, thanks, Michelle, for everything that you've done. We really appreciate your service and uh would you just let us know what, who's your favorite counselor uh before we end the meeting, if you don't mind? Just kidding, you don't have to answer that. Um, I just wanted to mention that uh um we had a good meet, uh Two Creeks had their meeting on Saturday. Uh, they had a lot of good discussions. Um, I know they talked a little bit about the uh, the uh blighted area uh that's coming up at their next council meeting, so hopefully uh they'll bring that up, uh some of their discussions about that. Um, I had a meeting with the Denver Regional Council of Governments. Um, I know the city requested seventy-five thousand dollars for their uh transportation uh improvements. And uh it looks like uh we have a recommended amount of probably sixty thousand dollars that hopefully will uh will get approved for. So just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. And then on our um ward meetings, you know, we're continuing to try to figure out good ways to do it. We tried to record one the other day. We had a microphone problem that messed it up, so we're going to try, try again. Um, you know, we'd like to have good ward meetings, but it's more difficult now than it has been. So, anyway. Thank you, everyone, and uh signing off.
Ward three?
Do you want me to go first? First of all, thank you, uh Councilmember Vincent, for alerting me to the problem. However, I also appreciate you not commenting that there are those that might feel with my head disappearing and might be an improvement. So, anyway, uh, we have ward meeting on um Saturday, virtual ward meeting, starting at nine o'clock. That's all.
Hi, everybody. Um, so we have taken care of the ward meeting, nine o'clock. Um, So we have taken care of the ward meeting, nine o'clock. I met with Representative Leslie Herrod and Grassroots Law Project on Wednesday to discuss possible state legislation for banning the use of ketamine statewide. We discussed a possible stakeholders' meeting. And so we are developing a list of people that might be interested in that issue and also trying to develop some policy on the issue. I am also developing a sort of a smaller task force of people who have been very involved. So Aurora City Council last Monday banned first responders from using ketamine until the investigation of Elijah McLean's death is complete. Mayor Mike Kaufman, as I had said last year, had weighed in and said he was in support of the big deal. I was interviewed on Saturday by the Police Accountability Report folks, and they're potentially going to put something out on Thursday. I've also been in contact with clergy in Aurora who are making a community effort at issues like ketamine. I sent a letter to Governor Polis and the Attorney General last week requesting the dismissal and/or pardon of all criminal charges in cases where people are found in excited delirium and their medical right to consent is taken away and they are given ketamine. Because my argument was they are not able to form the mental culpability to commit crimes if they are found in that state. And so my thought was that moving forward, this ketamine abuse will cease a bit if people can't be found guilty of criminal charges. We will see how that argument takes off, but I think it's an important argument. And so that's kind of what I've been up to all week. Thank you.
Ward Four?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Just wanted to let the community know that we have an upcoming Housing Policy Commission meeting. It's on September 30th at 6:00 PM. And so please, it'll be a Zoom meeting, obviously a virtual meeting, and we're looking forward to everyone's participation. If you have comments and things that you'd like to submit, you can feel free to send them to any of our councilors who are on that. And it's a six person. So you can send them to Mayor Paul. We have Councilor Vincent on, we have Councilor Bida, myself, and Councilor Harrison. So you can certainly reach out and share your thoughts on that.
Also, Councilor Johnson too.
Yes, sorry, Councilor Johnson. I was looking on the screen, we can't see everyone. So thank you, hope you can attend.
Thank you.
We had the Development Dialogue Committee meeting this last week. I won't go through all the names of the folks on the committee, they know who they are. We did discover, we have part two of our discussion on districts. We're going to have a part three, it turns out, because it seems to be a favorite topic amongst us. So part three will happen TBD. That is going to be, we're going to actually try to get down to the specific recommendations that we'll make to this entire body. So look for those to come out. And then we are going to move on to next topics. And I think we have ADUs and group homes have been agreed to some time ago that those will be the immediate next topics. And then there is going to be a discussion about topics after that. There's been mention of, do we talk about inclusionary zoning, different topics like that? So if you're wanting to weigh in on that, then go ahead and contact the committee members on that to give your input. And that's all I have. And from Barb and I, thanks, Michelle, for everything.
Ward Five?
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. Thanks, Karen. So first, I also just want to echo a thanks to Michelle. And one thing I just want to say is, you know, Michelle always has to be in the rooms and in the meetings whenever we have a bunch of candidate meetings. And this is a bunch of people all running against each other in elections. And she just is always unbelievably professional and helpful equally to everyone and just, I don't know, I just feel like you handle those situations just with excellent grace. And I feel like everybody would say that you help all of us. So really appreciate, I'm sad to know that you're going to leave, but I wish you the best in what you do next. Secondly, Karen and I, as I mentioned before, are working on putting together a mental health Zoom meeting that will be welcome, you know, anyone from any ward is welcome to join. We heard back today with some potential dates, I'm going to, you know, get with Karen and then we'll let you know. It could be as soon as next week, but potentially in October, so that we have enough time to get the word out. So thanks to JCMH for being willing to help us with that. And then finally, to council, well, first, thank you to staff for helping us work through the sign proposal, building an inclusive community signs. We have some information to share with all of you that kind of clarified some of the points that we were discussing at the last meeting. So we will share that with all of you. Would love your feedback ahead of the meeting so that if there are any changes that need to be made, we can address that with plenty of time. It's not scheduled yet, but just wanting to touch base with all of you and to highlight, please look out for an email about that tomorrow. And that is all I have. Karen, I'll let you talk about our ward meeting, if that's okay.
Sounds good. First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you to Michelle. She's always been such a bright, shiny face with a wonderful smile and a kind word for all of us, even when we're really acting kind of stupid, she always makes us feel like we're stars. So thank you so much, Michelle. You've been wonderful and delightful to work with. I wish you the very best. Our Ward Five meeting will be Saturday, October 3rd at 9:00 AM. It will be a Zoom meeting and we will have discussion on the marijuana initiative. The, what we'll have is 20 minute presentations from both sides with Q and A at the end of the meeting after both have presented, so that we have fair time for everybody. And I'm really hoping that you come with good questions and be sure to listen. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
All right, so I had the opportunity to go out to the Indy Flats Development today, a Metro West newest community, I believe. And they received a pretty large award from Housing Colorado on that property. So I was able to go out there and check in there, which was really cool. And congratulations to them. Census, time is running out. This is so, so, so important for our community. So please, you know, get the word out. It's safe, it's confidential, you count no matter what, you count. And we need to count everyone in the city of Lakewood. So please get that word out. Also, voting, we're going to start to get close to that time, ballots will go out. We have a very safe and proven, efficient system for voting here in Colorado facilitated by our incredible clerks. So please get that word out. And I think this year, there will be more drop boxes as well to make it more convenient for people who want to drop their ballots rather than mail them. Shreddit Day, which I'm sure will be very popular, is this Saturday from 9:00 to noon at Jeffco Stadium. Just a heads up, these are so popular that sometimes there can be traffic jams, sometimes you might get there and you may not be able to shred your stuff. But you're limited, I think, to four boxes in your trunk and it should be contactless and your stuff will be shredded in the presence of the Labor Police Department. So that's always a very popular event. So I appreciate the community doing that. And then as far as next week goes, I think we've had a couple of great weeks of just great preparedness by council and Ms. Hodson, her team, really getting really thorough presentations put up for the community and for council. And I would just encourage council next week, it's going to be a lot and a long meeting. So please take the time to get your questions in. And it can be challenging when you get those in at 3:00, 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock on a Monday afternoon for staff to ensure that they get you your answers. So please take the time to do that. It'll make sure that we have a much better process. And then as far as processes go, I think a lot of people are saying, how do we, what do we, when do we get back to normal? And a really smart person who's very skilled in local government said, you know, why don't we take a look at doing things different than the way we used to do them? You know, formats like this can allow for a lot of other people to participate rather than some of the older formats that we had. And so I just want to encourage council to think about that and think about ways that we can use this opportunity, this set of circumstances, to maybe do things different and set local government in a new direction that hasn't been seen before. And it really resonated with me and I just wanted to share that and see where we go with that. This could really help us in the neighborhoods that may not have an opportunity to participate in city council meetings at 7:00 PM in chambers. So I think we should really take that advice and I want to thank her for sharing that with me. And then last, but certainly not least, by any means, Michelle, thank you so much. It's very challenging to be in a position where you interface with electeds as well as the public. And certainly there is angst and probably more so than in most years, you know, there's been some, some things that haven't been amazing and you've just held your head up and plowed right through and done it with grace and you smiled. And, you know, for some of us, we're used to having people say mean things, but that's another part of this job and you've endured a lot, as has all of our staff. And it's a rewarding job, but I know it can be challenging to all this team, especially right now. So thank you so much for your tenure here at the city of Lakewood. We will miss you. You operate with honesty and integrity. And if folks were to see the amount of open records requests that you have had to process through with precision, right? Not ever one complaint, maybe one complaint out of 10,000 public records requests. Incredible job. So we will miss you and hopefully you'll continue to check in. And we know Bernie will keep us in line and keep us surprised of the Broncos score during meetings. So anything else here that we have? All right, well, we will adjourn at 9:30. Thank you all very much and we'll see you next Monday night.